In the meeting place, this is. This is the work session for the Bell Vista City Council for Monday, August sixteenth. As usual, I'm going to bounce around a bit. We have some guests joining us from the Arts Council. If you look into item H, now I guess that's just my book, but there was in your parcel, there are three pages. I hope you had a chance to review them. Demra Tiffert is here. She's the president of the Advisory Council. And also Sharon Wadigar, who is her second in command, Sharon. And so if you want to turn to their handouts, it's in the discussion item portion of your packet. And ladies, I'm going to let you take it away.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor Christie. So first of all, thank you for allowing us some time on your schedule for the working session. We've been developing an opportunity for public art at the library for a couple of months now. Our key stakeholders are Mayor Christie, Susan Santos, and Suzanne Adams of the library. In your package, what you have is three documents. There's the press release, which gives you a pretty good overview of the goals and opportunities we're trying to achieve with the art. Secondly, is a diagram of where the sculptures would be placed. And then there's a spec sheet that covers sort of the power requirements, some of the details, details about the sculptures and essentially their lightning bugs. They will be installed in such a way that they'll connect to the main power source of the library. So when the lights come on in the evening, they will also come on. Let's see, what else? So if you'll take a look at the diagram, you'll see that we've indicated six lightning bugs, three along the back side where the large windows are, two on the side where the gardens have been created, and then one by the front entrance. And these have yellow light bulbs, so they'll come on and they'll look somewhat like a real lightning bug. And the installation is going to be done in such a way to make them as natural as possible so that the installation is somewhat invisible. And because we didn't want you to see all the infrastructure that supports them. I should also mention that the Art Council is going to lead the effort in terms of the fundraising. But this is in partnership with Susan Santos and the Library Foundation. So we've arranged with her the ability for her to create a separate account for the foundation, which would be designated for these sculptures. And when we receive indications from donors who want to support the project, we'll instruct them to indicate that their payment goes to the Library Foundation and earmarked for the sculptures. She will manage that account. And then once we move forward with purchasing the sculptures, the foundation will make that payment to the artist. And we've also reviewed this with Jason, the city attorney. He's prepared to create a document that indicates the Library Foundation will then transfer the ownership of the lightning bugs to the city. And then the city will be responsible for maintaining them. I don't think I've left anything out. Is there, are there any questions? I can go through some of the details about how we're going to install them, if that's of interest.
I have a question.
Yes.
You say that the city is going to be responsible for maintenance. What kind of maintenance is there going to be?
That's a great question. If you have access to the documents and you can see the image of one of the lightning bugs, they're made out of upcycled materials that age naturally. So there won't be any maintenance on the actual metal parts. The only maintenance would be to replace the light bulb and these are, you know, according to the artist, should last probably three years. Also, it's important to note that these exact type sculptures are installed in Rogers. They've been there for a few years. They're also installed in Little Rock. And then the artist has other types of sculptures installed in other areas, all of the same kind of materials.
Okay. Does anybody else have questions?
I have a comment. I just want to say thank you, you guys. I see a lot of work has been put into this. And obviously you're doing this because you care about the arts. And this looks like a really cool, kind of small in scale, I would say, enhancement to the library grounds. It looks, I was unsure about it as I was reading through it. Once I got to the picture of it, I really, it really struck me as, this is really cool. This will look really nice out there. Six of them, a grand total of $3,000. It sounds like a real frugal way to invest in some art. I guess if I got that right, are they about $500 apiece then?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I think, I think it's a very modest investment in the library grounds and nominal, or if any maintenance going forward, just bulb replacement, perhaps, you know, the odd electrical issue, something like that. But I think it looks really good. And thank you guys very much for being here tonight, for all the work that you've put into this.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Sharon, do you have anything that you'd like to offer?
It's been a great process for us to go through this. And I definitely think with the added educational program for kids in the community, as well as, you know, families in general, I think it's, it will be a nice compliment to the library and the surroundings.
Demra, are we also going to start the Artist of the Month sometime, given the surge in the COVID variant?
Yes. Well, we actually did start it back in, oh, the planning was, you know, April, May, June, and we had one scheduled for July that we ended up canceling the week before because of the Delta surge. So unfortunate that we felt like we could finally hold an event safely. And we had the press, you know, prepared to come out and cover the event and also donations for the food. And so we were pretty excited about it. But unfortunately, you know, we err on the side of safety for everyone involved, including the artists, as well as the board and advisors. So we will reschedule it as soon as, you know, the city and other organizations deem that it's safe to do so.
Super.
Just Peter, I thought it was great to see the cooperation between the library and the Arts Council. I think that's really neat to see the cross pollination, so to speak.
Yes, it's been, it's been nice to see it because you've got all three entities involved in it. Everybody's been very positive and upbeat, and these two ladies have really carried the torch, and I congratulate them. Mr. Wells, did you have something?
I did. I want to, I guess, thank them for some creative thinking in putting this together. My question is, is that the lightning bugs themselves, one, I think, will be on the side of the building. The other ones will be along the path or in the, in the flat area surrounding the building. What about running the electric circuit, circuits for the lighting on this? Is that included in that $3,000 cost, or is that a local additional cost?
The installation costs are estimated to be between $350 and $450. And what that includes is, and we brought in Tom Wooters, who does a lot of the maintenance work for the library already. So he's been part of the technical walkthrough with the artist. Also note that the artist owns a company that provides electric services for 200 McDonald's. So he's a certified electrician and also has, you know, a very strong background in this. When we did the technical walkthrough, we identified where the main power source was for each side of the building in terms of an access point. The lightning bugs will be attached to hollow metal pipes. And the wiring run through that metal pipe and then trenched underground to along the side of the building, so will all be buried. And then that metal pipe at the base will have prongs extending out so that it can be buried with concrete to provide a really stable installation. But also the metal pipes will blend into the woods and the other natural, you know, habitat, so they'll, they'll sort of look like they are actually flying. But Tom Wooters has been involved in checking on the electrical access and confirming with us. In fact, I have an email from him confirming, you know, the installation costs and estimates. And the, those installation costs will be covered by a donation from a board member.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else have a thought, Doug?
No, I just thought, but I, I really like it. I think it'll add kind of like a whimsical flair to the library. And I think that's really neat. I think the children will love it. And, you know, just listening to the both of you, you know, talk through this, you guys obviously had thought long and hard about this. You really have a plan, you know, a real well thought out plan put in. It sounds like there really isn't anything you haven't thought about. So thank you very much for your time and your efforts. It's going to be really neat.
Thank you. I can also add that we've talked to Susan and Suzanne about leveraging some of the creative people in the community for providing music for those events. And we've also talked about rotating art throughout the library from some of our local artists. So we have a lot of other programs that we're working on with them. And so we're all pretty excited about it.
I think you're also working with Police Chief Graves and putting something in front of the new Public Safety Building.
Well, that's a surprise, Mayor Christie. That's for next month.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm still, I, we are, we are pretty excited about an opportunity to place some sculpture statue. That's all in development, but I'm currently working on getting some estimates from a foundry up in Missouri that I will be presenting to the mayor soon, hopefully, as well as having a group of stakeholders, including Chief Graves, involved in making that final selection on what that's going to look like. But I've also been working with high jacks and architects, the team that's working on that building, to get support for creating a platform, a power to it so that it can be lit at night. So hopefully soon we will have some real specifics for you.
Wow. Another, another question. Yeah, just how many sculpture type artists do we have in Bell Vista?
Sculpture artists. I only know of one that, and that doesn't mean that there haven't been some new people who've moved here. We have created a database going back two or three years ago when the Artist of the Month program was started. And so we maintain that database and add people and as people move out, take them off the list. And so we recognize, oh gosh, maybe 25 artists so far in the Artist of the Month program. But we do have a particular artist who works in mosaics. So it would be more of a 2D type of installation. And she uses precious materials, stone, turquoise, granite, you know, all sorts of materials to create these really beautiful mosaics. And ideally, I would love to find a wall that we could include something like that so that we could have a Bell Vista artist represented.
So exactly, how many artists do you have in this database now that are in Bell Vista?
Let's see. I haven't counted recently, probably about 60. And keep in mind that includes musicians, vocalists, craft.
Authors.
Authors, yes, thank you. We have recognized some authors. So any type of creative individual.
Very interesting.
So it is pretty, we have a very rich array of artists in Bell Vista. And that's why the Artist of the Month program has been so successful because it's really about showcasing that Bell Vista, you know, has these treasures, you know, just like other cities. And so having public art to draw people to come here for the Artist of the Month program, for these sculptures, especially since you've got a Marlin Blackwell-designed library expansion, that's a big draw for a lot of people. And so we are, we're hoping that all these programs together are going to attract, you know, tourism, you know, which is the ultimate goal.
Do we get any kind of notification or the Artist of the Month?
Yes. Jerry, yes, it comes out to council. The problem is, we haven't had it since you've come back onto council because of COVID. But yes, everybody is invited to it. We've seen some very, very interesting art and forms of art that have been done. And I'm hoping that that's going to continue once we get through this COVID business.
Well, and our venues have changed also. So, you know, Cassie's done a really great job of getting our press releases out. It goes to the Vista, to the POA, and then we follow up with the, with the, with Terry over at the Vista to see if one of her journalists can come out and interview the artist, so it gets into the papers. We also promote it through our own social media. And there was something else. Now I can't think there was something else I was going to say. But, but anyway, yes, it's very well publicized and and hopefully, again, we can have them soon.
Great. Ladies, thank you for joining us. You're more than welcome to listen to what might be considered dull compared to what you're doing. But it's the important business.
It's important work.
Yes, of running the city.
Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you for allowing us some time this evening.
You're very welcome.
Bye bye.
Bye.
Derek.
All righty, we don't have any old business to carry over, so we'll go back to the agenda as it has been put forth. We have three ordinances. They're all Cooper requests. It's the traditional going from a P1 to an R1. I do know that Mr. Burke and myself attended the Planning Commission. And rather than perhaps going through each one, I'm hoping that you've had a look at it. And Taylor, Derek, let me try a new approach. I didn't hear of any red flags at all for these three. They all conform to the surrounding neighborhoods. They all conform to the 24 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. They're all going to residential. There is no commercial. Did I miss anything, or are there any concerns that staff has?
I don't have any concerns to speak of, Mayor. The only minor comment I would say is 29, excuse me, 39 to 30, the one at Chelsea. Technically, I documented that that one does not meet the plan. Really, it's kind of more of an of an issue with how the comp plan showed some of these reserved properties, for the most common areas, when in fact, they're, they're actually reserved property and they can be rezoned to anything, including R1. So it's a technicality, just to note that. But it's in, it is in congruence and in sync with the, with the future land use map.
Thank you. Does anyone, anyone want to go through each one? Or have you read them and do you feel comfortable with them, Doug?
No, I don't, you know, certainly don't need to go through each one. I drove by two of them today. And quite honestly, the other one, I had to really dig and work to locate where it was, which is on, out on the west side. Didn't even show up in, you know, map program on my iPhone at all, you know. And there was the same property like that last month, too. In other words, it's a remote property. But the only thing I'll have to say about these is, as I look at each one of them, I certainly don't have a difficult time understanding why they were zoned as P1 14 years ago, when the city first formed. And everyone was under pressure, you know, timelines to get these things done. If you just drive by and look at them, and you know, you have to zone them as something, I think P1 was an easy decision. And, and that's all I had to say about them. I mean, I can understand why they were placed as a reserved property by the original developer as well, you know, versus a lot of other land that could be developed as R1 in a much easier, probably streamlined fashion and at much less cost. So anyway, that's all I'd say about that.
Thank you. Anybody else want to chime in? Okay, let's move along to item D, which is Amending Resolution Number 2021-35. To clarify, the two signatures are only required on city checks and not bank deposits. This was as a result of bringing Kim over to the bank and going through the process of having to sign everything. And Mr. Kelly, could you just give us the Cliff Notes on this, please?
Sure. Can everyone hear me okay? I've got a little bit different setup. I just want to make sure it can be heard. Okay. The, we heard from the bank. And so the language in the resolution, which has been the same for years, but then again, the bank doesn't see that resolution every year because once the signature cards are set at the bank, we don't, we don't really do anything different to show that to them every year. But we had said that all transactions require two signatures. And so that, that prompted them to say, well, that means we're going to require two signatures on deposits, which I'm not even sure how that would exactly work since the checks are payable to the city and are stamped for deposit only. But in any event, to eliminate this potential concern, we're just want to clarify that that requirement is only as it regards checks and not anything else. Now, I will tell you, just in case the question comes up in your mind, there is a policy in place already as it relates to electronic payments. So anything we pay electronically is pursuant to policy, pursuant to an ordinance which you all adopted, or previous councils have adopted several years ago, which conformed to state legislative audit requirements at the time. So this really only involves checks. That's it. So it's just clarified for the bank.
Are there any questions at all?
Jason, while we're in there working on this one and cleaning it up, it just struck me, reading over the resolution that it names specific people instead of naming just the role. It seems to me like that just builds in some work that doesn't need to be there. But like the first three, the mayor, the city clerk, and the police chief. Without naming names, why wouldn't we just leave it as those are the positions that would sign for this?
That's, that's up to the council. I mean, the council set those three people up and, and we adopt this every year. So obviously, any year you can change it. And, and so why it's written the way it's written, I guess that's just the way I wrote it that day. Obviously, the mayor is the same mayor we had last year and will be, suppose at least for next year, it'll be the same mayor. We may have a different mayor at some point, and we'll change that. But usually people, especially the bank, is going to want to see a name. Now, I know I've said, having said that, I know that we say in the resolution, the mayor pro tem. And the reason it says that is because we didn't know who the mayor pro tem was going to be on that same agenda when we adopted that resolution, because that was the first, one of the first resolutions we adopted in the year. That's in the first council meeting. That's when we elected mayor pro tem. And so we didn't have that name at the time, so we just put that in there. So we can do it either way. It could be changed. We could, but if you put a role, you know, the bank, when we go to change it, I think it might make it easier for the bank for it to say a name because then we have to prove to the bank that the person actually has the role that we say that they have, and it could require more paperwork. But again, we could probably do it that way at some point in the future, if that's what you all prefer.
It was just a thought to make it a little easier to manage. I don't feel strongly about it. If this works for the bank, it's okay by me.
All righty, thank you, Larry.
My only comment, I initially was in, in some support of what Counselor Burke was saying to simplify it. But since it's an annual process for us, the names are appropriate and applicable in here and it satisfies the curiosity of the financial institutions or third parties, which may be constituents out there as to who really has authority to do this and that names them names. So I support what we're doing here.
Thank you. Anybody else have any thoughts? Okay, let's move on to the next one. On page two is also a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with emergency vehicle specialists, EBS, pursuant to an HDAC Cooperative Purchasing Agreement for the purchase of 10 self-contained breathing apparatus in an amount not to exceed $90,181.26 for use by the Fire Department. Chief Sims is here. Chief, do you have any thoughts on this?
Yeah.
He's wanting to take questions if anybody has any.
Is this a replacement of existing equipment or something new?
This is, I'm replacing actually seven, actually 11 air packs. I put 10 in there. It's replacing 11 air packs that are from, seven of them are completely out of service. They're no longer can be repaired. And four of them are 1997 compliant. So the rest of, that's, that's a starting of a program of replacing them. And we do have a grant out. Hopefully, we'll be able to replace the rest of them in the future with a grant. We haven't received that grant. But we got to immediately get those replaced, as soon as we can.
So, so we actually, Chief, Chief Sims, we actually have more than 10 of these units in our department.
We do. We actually have, that's correct. We actually, I'll give you a breakdown right quick. We have 33 air packs. This is based on different fire apparatuses throughout the city. And seven of those are completely out of service. So that takes us down to 26 functioning self-contained breathing apparatuses, with 19 of those being 19 years old. And there's no repair parts available for them, but they're still in condition we could use. Two of those are 2013 compliant. And one of those is 2018 compliant. So we've replaced a couple of them throughout the years. These are generally items that, that last a long time. As long as they work and have parts available and they work, then their usable limit, they are 19, 20 years. Like I said, we have four that are 1997 compliant, which part of these 10 will help replace those units as well. They last, they last a long time when you take care of them.
And this will provide additional spares for your new station, free on the west side. Is that right?
That station houses the same engine. It's going to be out there. It's out there currently. It's just being moved over, so it has the same amount of air packs on it.
Okay. Thank you.
These are, it's just part of a replacement plan. We need to start looking at that. We tried for the last three years for the same grant we have out right now. Haven't been successful with it. But we're hoping now since we're showing that we are able to spend a little bit of funding to replace some of their packs, that they'll give us additional funding to replace the other 20 or 23. That's where we're at.
Thank you for your effort.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the last resolution authorizing the sale of a surplus city vehicle currently used by the Street Department of Public Auctions pursuant to Bell Vista City Code Section 2-345. This is actually, if I remember, Mr. Kelly, because Mr. Button isn't able to join us this evening. This arose rather quickly. The POA sends their stuff from time to time out to public auction. And they will invite us to send any vehicles or equipment over that we would like to dispose of after declaring them surplus. That has been a successful venture for us in the past. And so Mike said, yes, I have a very old Silverado pickup. It's a 2007. It's got 135,000 miles on it, and it's exceeded its life cycle. He would like to put it into the auction, and, and he must gain your permission to do so. So that's how this transpired. Jerry?
Sounds like a no brainer to me.
Yeah. Jerry, did you have something?
I'm sorry, I missed who. Who's handling the auction?
Well, the POA will contract it out to someone.
Okay.
So the POA, courtesy comes to us every time they're going to do this and asks if we would like to send any of our equipment into the same auction. And we have done so in the past, and we've got a good price for it. Larry?
It creates some additional material and products or stuff for uh, material and products or, uh, stuff for them to dispose of. So it adds to their list of, uh, attractiveness for buyers. Uh, I think they do this every year annually at the, uh, at the maintenance, uh, office on Huntley. I'm not sure. I don't know if that's in the spring or the fall. I think historically it was done in the spring, but I'm not sure when they're doing it now, but that's probably what you're talking about.
Yes, that's correct. It'll be held up there. It'll be, uh, probably next month, if I remember correctly from what Mike told me.
Yeah.
Okay. That's the end of the agenda. We'll go into the discussion items. The first is a guardrail update and Mr. Tap, I believe you're with us.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Council, good evening. Uh, an update on the guardrail, as you've seen driving down, uh, the, the connector over there, it's, uh, there's a section between Watson and Sullivan that is complete. That section originally started out as five hundred and thirty-eight feet. And, uh, they got in there and found that some of the utilities near the roads couldn't be moved. And so that got shortened to about two hundred feet. You'll see seventy feet on one end and a hundred and thirty feet on the other that don't have a guardrail. So, uh, engineers are working now on another section of guardrail between Sullivan and Merritt. And, uh, that one will also be about three hundred and thirty linear feet. They're, they're working, uh, now on utilities as well to see if there's any that can be moved that that won't cost an absorbent amount. Uh, we do have quotes on those and we're going to be able to use. They're trying to give us a credit for the remaining two hundred feet that we got back and our engineers and talks with the contractor now, we felt that should be worth a little bit more than what they're offering. So as soon as we get that lined out, um, the contractor is going to install another three hundred and thirty feet between Sullivan and Merritt. And, uh, the mayor and I went out and inspected that section that's been installed and we felt like it looks pretty good. Any comments on what you've seen over there?
Well, I, I drive by there a lot and, uh, I, I thought it looked good. That, uh, I wasn't quite sure what they put on the guardrail, but they did something to make it look not quite so shiny and metallic and, and blend in a little better. I thought it looked quite nice.
Yes, sir. That's a natural, uh, uh, finish that's, that will weather and, you know, a little more over time is hopefully will look more like the fences that you see out there that are wood colored and that rustic, uh, uh, finish.
Yeah.
Anybody else, Larry?
Uh, uh, Mr. Tap, what kind of longevity might we expect out of this, uh, material that they're using? Is it something that will require replacement periodically over time? Was like after ten years or after fifteen years or after somebody runs into it with their vehicle, takes a bunch down?
Uh, Larry, I, I haven't been told by the engineers of, of how long it will last. They did tell me that that would last longer than the, than the other finish that you see out there on the highways that, uh, Mr. Flynn mentioned. So I would suppose decades. Um, but, uh, yeah, if someone hits it, there, there will be a maintenance. You can replace small sections of that if it gets hit or dented. You, you know, unless just someone came down through there at a high rate of speed and took out half of it, yeah, you wouldn't have to, you know, replace the entire thing. You can, you can just replace posts as needed. Sections of guardrail.
Now, I should, I should tell all of you that, um, I've been in speaking to trail planners about this and they have asked me to be sure that you understand that when council makes a decision like this on putting in something such as these guardrails that are not required by the international code, the moment we do it, we're out of compliance. Which also means that the engineers that have stamped the plans who are responsible in case something goes wrong are no longer responsible because we have moved in and decided that we want the guardrails in there. So as long as everybody's clear on that, that you've negated the liability that the engineer might have because of his stamp. So if something goes terribly wrong, we are not on the hook because we have toward immunity. But the engineer is on, off the hook as well. So as long as you understand that. Okay. I'm going to skip the septic because I imagine that's going to take a while. Mr. Flynn, I'm going to ask you to address the paving policy, please.
Sure. Uh, you know, uh, a number of months ago, Larry Wills brought up about the paving policy and you question whether we should, uh, pay for any of the paving, uh, new, when there's new construction of homes. And that, uh, advised the mayor to ask me to take a look at that. Well, there's some discussion among council at the time. Take a look at this with the street committee. And, uh, we struggled with it quite a bit. At first we were, uh, waiting on the impact. You know, we had to see how the impact fee sorted out because we weren't clear how that was going to sort out vis a vis the road. And, uh, as you know, that ended up not being any help, any financial help. So, uh, we've, we've discussed this quite a bit and, uh, there's really several different options that I guess got the most focus. One was pretty much what you see in front of you. I believe Wayne Jerksen said around everyone, which really is a a modification of the earlier hundred fifty foot rule with some, uh, additional, uh, hypotheticals or nuances that, uh, Mike Button noticed that these are based on recurring things that actually happened that, that he noticed were things that were coming up. And, uh, one was to not pay anything at all, which was, uh, seriously considered. And then we, uh, some of the people on the committee wanted to try some different things and basically it had to do with assessing people and we ran these past our attorney and and found that we weren't able to do some of those things. So this is basically what we came up with, uh. One of the most significant things I thought is, uh, in talking to the street committee and to Mike Button, is he felt, you know, the existing policy where we paved just this little bit and not too much. Uh, he felt that it was being very effective and that once we implemented this policy, people were building houses in places where there wasn't a lot of paving needed as opposed to building them, you know, far out. Uh, so he felt like it was effective. Uh, the second thing Mike feels strongly about is in the interim, we've had no policy. And he thinks that's a big problem. You know, people ask him, hey, what's the deal? And he'll say, well, they're trying to figure it out. There is no deal, you know? So it'd be better to have a rule, whatever it is, and just tell people, look, this is the rule. The idea being tell them upfront when they go for a permit and whatnot. And, uh, we, uh, the street department did do some calculations and they figured out the hundred fifty foot of paving uh, at current levels, which as you know, there's pretty fair-minded building going on, is costing us forty thousand dollars a year. So they just looked at all their actual experience to see, uh, what was happening. And, you know, in a pretty stout market like we have now, it's forty thousand a year. So, so Mike was feeling that we should implement this policy and, you know, maybe sometime in the future decide we want to do something differently. But for now, he felt like this was the best option. So, uh, that's the summary of, of how we, we came to this.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions?
I have one. Hello?
Yeah.
Okay.
You got me? Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
My, my question is, you know, I know we're not going to go pave anything or something like that, and I can live with all of that. But depending on where the, the house is and, and the road, are we going to at least maybe brush hog it so we can get back to it? Or maybe at least grade it? Don't put anything on it, but grade it so they can, uh, get their stuff back there. A lot of these roads are deteriorated weather-wise for years of not used. So I'm not saying we pave anything, but brush hog back to the lot at least and then possibly grade it. And that's it. Don't do anything else. You know, one or the other or neither. I, I can live with all of it. It's just a thought.
I've got a question, a question or comment. Um, so I, I, what I, what I have seen, um, as, as far as like, you know, not necessarily paving and, and a couple of these were pretty good distances. One of them is really a long distance. Um, you know, this goes back to, I don't know, within probably six months or eight months of when I was first, uh, elected to city council, I, I did some ride-alongs and checking some things out and streets and whatnot. Uh, and there was one, I want to call it a street. I mean, I guess that's what it is, but it had all been all grown over, whatnot. I mean, it wasn't really usable anymore. You could drive back through it if you're willing to get your vehicle all scratched up or whatever, but there was a, uh, builder that had indicated an interest in building a home. I don't know. I mean, where I'm talking several hundred feet back up this unimproved overgrown street. And we had gone in there with a grader and graded it all down and got it ready. Then the builder decided not to build anything. So we spent a lot of money doing that, you know, for naught. Then I'm driving by, I don't know, a couple of years later and I looked over and I noticed that road had been not just graded, but it's the, what, what's the white rock we put down? That we require for parking, uh, vehicles on?
Sub base two.
Sub B two.
Yeah. That whole entire road, I mean, way back up the hill and all the way around had been graded and that white rock had been put down. There's also uh, a home over on Chelsea where we had done the same thing. You know, we had put down that, what'd you call it? S B one, S B two or whatever.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's at a cost as well. And I, I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, uh, uh, Jim just mentioned maybe grading out a, a road back a certain distance and doing that. Then what about the option of just doing the S B one rather than, uh, paving? And then I would have another question is at what point on a, a street, so we're talking about an initial home, a hundred and fifty feet. So if another person comes in and builds a home, uh, at the lot next to that other home, are we going to go back then and pave that back past the second home? Or if you get three or four homes that are built back four, five, six lots back, at what point do we decide that we're going to pave the entire street or cul-de-sac or whatever it is? I mean, this is talking about an initial issue, but at what point again, do we pull the trigger and do even more than a hundred and fifty feet? Uh, I have an appreciation for an initial document that kind of spells out the policy. But if we're going to go down this path, it seems like we should make it a little more robust and all encompassing uh, for these unimproved roads.
Well, that's a good point, you know, and that's one of the reasons we struggle with this is you run into so many different situations. So that's certainly why I had some, uh, wiggle room at the end of the policy, which probably Jason Kelly would notice more than other people where, because sometimes the city just might think, hey, you know what? It's in our best interest to pave these two or three roads for various reasons. But the one thing Mike brought up about that, you know, the gravel and the S B one and, uh, you know, sometimes that works out fine, but in so many places in Bella Vista, you know, things are on a slant. And so you say, oh, I'm just going to put gravel in instead of paving this. Well, then the gravel's constantly washing out every time there's a big storm and he finds himself running back to fix it and end up spending so much money and thinks, well, it would have worked out better if I just paved this. You know, as far as what the city's spending or aggravation or all of the above. So it's tricky because there's just so many different situations that come up in Bella Vista with the topography.
I would just say I, I recognize that. It is tricky. I know.
And I, I wouldn't, you know, do anything with the lot till we had all our permits. So it isn't like the guy's making an issue. He's going to build and all of a sudden he backs out. He doesn't get anything from us until all the permits are through just before we get started. And as far as, you know, doing the S B two trick, you know, that again, you, you, you're talking dollars, not maybe near as much as a pavement, but you're still talking dollars. And when I'm talking about this, you know, passable and grading, that's it. You get it one time. After that, you're on your own till we get around to paving it or more people build.
Hey, Mr. Williams? Mr. Williams?
I, I guess, uh, I think Attorney Kelly might agree with this is that all of these streets that we're speaking of that are unimproved, if you will, uh, were probably originally graded to some degree to a cross-section accommodating drainage and a road bed. Uh, it was a practice at that time and even a practice today in some communities to not put S B two down over the native soil uh, before they put pavement down. Uh, I think it's a prac, I, I think it's an improved technical practice to do that. It adds longevity, longevity to the, to the roadway itself by putting the S B two down at an additional cost, but neither here nor there. I think our obligation, uh, since these are platted streets, platted lots, is that when someone chooses to build on a lot on one of these inaccessible streets, our obligation is to make it, uh, accessible via an all-weather surface. Now, what I'm saying is an all-weather surface is not that it has to be paved, but that it is durable to handle fire trucks and other things in the worst conditions. Uh, that means in the spring rains or in the fall rains or in the winter time and that the boat can be reasonably plowed for access if there's snow. Uh, and that, uh, a large vehicle like a fire truck can get down safely to access the property at any time of the year, regardless of the season. So uh, beyond that, our obligation really is not necessarily to do any paving at all from the existing street pavement that may be there. Uh, and that was a point that I wanted to start at the beginning of the year by saying we won't do any, any pavement extensions uh, for the hundred and fifty feet, which is in the current policy. We would eliminate doing that altogether. Uh, that would be our prerogative if we wish to do it, but there would be no obligation on our part to do it. Uh, I think putting in when you do, uh, uh, when someone comes in with a lot, uh, three hundred feet or five hundred feet down one of these bottlenecks, uh, we have an obligation to grade it for drainage and make the roadbed safe and accessible. How we choose to do that is our prerogative. And so I think the least cost, uh, excluding any pavement is where we should initially start until we have more than a single home down there.
Kelly, what is our obligation? I know we cannot block the road so people do not have access to their lots.
Uh, you, you, the, it's not much. I, I can tell you that, like keeping the road open and, uh, and, uh, allowing access to people's property. Um, obviously there are public safety concerns, which Mr. Williams brings up about fire protection and things that are in the city's interest, uh, to, to see, make sure it's mowed down or, but, um, I, I think I've said it before and I, and I'm, none of you have brought this up, so I'm going to bring it up and, uh, I'm not suggesting anyone has asked me about this, but I just want to make sure all of you understand this. No city that I have ever been affiliated with or know of does this. Subsidize new home construction by agreeing to build out streets at taxpayers' expense so a contract, a contractor can build a new home. Uh, all cities would require any build-out of infrastructure, even existing streets in the proportion of impact uh, and that are directly related to the construction and put that burden on the developer. Now, I, it's, I, I would want to look into it, but I strongly suspect that the city could be in a position to require the property owners association in Bella Vista to pay to build these streets out and pave them out to these new roads. Uh, at least to some degree. Uh, especially if we're going to look at the amount of money we're looking at. Now, I, I'm not committing to that at this point. But you have to remember the history here a little bit. Now, I, I guess I've been around here long enough now to, I know Jim's been around here long enough too, but before there was ever a city, the P O A paid for that, paid for that. They would send them, they would send out according to their covenant and declarations, which they specifically have the right to do and would say specifically collect assessment fees to do. And that is to use their money to build out, to improve streets for the benefit of their members. And I understand the city is not all, uh, the P O A, but the P O A is all in the city. And so, um, uh, they, this, these are my words, not anyone else's, but they absolutely dumped that on city government when we became the city. I don't know if it was just based on some thought that the city, since it was a street, had I don't know if it was just based on some thought that the city, since it was a street, had now had the obligation. I don't know. Obviously, they, they would like to not have to use their budgetary resources on that. That's understandable. But it very likely might be worth your effort to look into some sort of an ordinance that would require that. Because we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars over years to, to build out streets, which in turn costs us more money because there are now more roads to maintain and more population, everything else. So the city's obligation, getting back to the original question, how nice do we have to make these roads? Well, my answer to you is not very.
Not very.
Illegal to meet legal requirements. That's, and that's the answer I'm going to give you. That's not going to meet public expectation, but that would meet legal requirement.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn, do you want to take these comments back to your group?
Yeah, sure. I'd be happy to do that. Yeah, I've been taking copious notes.
Good, okay.
Let me just add one thing on the the, the, the legal standard, the constitutional standard. And again, we're, we're Bella Vista and we're unique here. But the constitutional standard, whenever the government, which is what we are, requires improvements because of development, it has to be connected. There has to be a nexus between what it is we require and, and the development. There has to be some connection. And then it has to be in proportion to the impact. I say impact, I'm not talking about impact fee, but I'm talking about the impact that the development has on, on the interest we're trying to protect. Nexus in proportion. So it's, it's, it's not, it's probably not proportional to require a new home that's built a quarter of a mile down the end of, the end of pavement down gravel for that person to pay to pave that road fully all the way after that drive when there may be nine intervening lots and houses built in the future that would have had no expense. But it might be proportional to require them to build out half of that road or to improve half of the part of the road that's just in front of their home. Well, that's, that's some improvement, but that, that gets you from a paved road to gravel to half a paved road in front of the house. And it becomes kind of a hodgepodge at that point if you go down that route. I, I just think that, that there, and, and again, it would take some research and, but, but given the commitment and the property interest that the POA has through its existing property rights that granted to them by the Coopers and as the developer and we have a lot of experience looking at that recently, we know. You know, we, we, we got, we got handed that burden and expectation. And, and the POA, and, and again, this is me talking, not you, and I'll invoke their ire, I guess, if I have to, but they kind of are like looking around thinking, who, what streets? We don't know anything about that anymore. And they know full well what they used to do. So I just want to make sure all of you are aware of that because I, I think there may be something we could do along those lines. I really do legally.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
No, I don't. I was just going to say, you know, Jason, during one of our meetings on, on this topic, I did ask you if the city had any obligation, you know, to pave these roads. I remember your answer at that time was no, we, we really don't. I think it's awful nice of us, you know, to do the 150 feet, but at the same time, you know, there are a lot of builders out there. They're pretty sharp. And they're going around building and they know our policy is if, you know, if they build a house on a corner where there's an unimproved road, they've got 150 feet they can take advantage of, which is awful attractive to a buyer. And I just don't really, I'm just not really comfortable. And quite frankly, I just don't really like placing that, that incentive out there, you know, in front of some of these, these, these builders, allowing, allowing them to take advantage of it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Burke?
Wanted to just comment quickly because I see this kind of correlating with our impact fees. I think it's unfair for the current residents of Bella Vista to have to incur the expense or to incur the expense of paving additional roads for new development. I don't, I don't think that's right. I think we're being overly generous. I think in the market conditions that we have today, this would be the right time to modify our policy and put that burden where every other city in, in, in the country puts it, and that is on the developer. And I think, you know, whether it meets public expectations, I, I don't think there's going to be a, a public outcry. I think you're going to have builders that don't like it. Because we've given them the treat for so long that they've become accustomed to it and they're going to be upset if, if we entertain the idea of changing. But I do feel like generally speaking, paving those roads is, is not, should not be the burden of existing residents of Bella Vista.
Hey, fair enough.
I, I think a practical, one practical thing that might happen is i- if the city announced it was just not going to do it. It didn't necessarily put a burden on anyone. It just said, we're not doing it. We're just gonna, well, if they're gravel, we're just going to grate them occasionally and keep them passable, but that's it. I think what may happen is you may have owners and builders say, look, look at the covenants they're subject to and say, wait a minute, we're paying assessments of POA to do roadwork here. You have a fiduciary obligation to do that for us as you used to do it for everyone else. And, and it could be that that would force their hand to do it without us having to legislate them do it. But that's, you know, that's nothing anyone's going to volunteer to do. That could be litigation. I'm an attorney. So no, you know, that doesn't necessarily bother me, but it certainly costs money and bothers everybody else to be involved litigation. So that, that's just, it could be a practical result if at some point the city said, no moss, no, we're not doing it anymore. So.
Hey, good advice. Mr. Williams?
Just for clarity, for Councilman Burke perhaps, any new development and Cooper has one coming up along Little Drive and North 279 near the city, near the city border up at Jane. That's raw land. There's like 30 or 40 acres. They're going to develop that. They have an obligation to do all of the street improvements and all the utility infrastructure and everything. So that's different than what we're dealing with in Bella Vista for existing platted subdivision lands where the lots are unimproved and the streets literally were almost unimproved when the developer walked away from them. Because it was under County Planning Commission purview and there was not a, a strong interest on the part of the, the county planning department or the county highway department to ensure that the streets in those platted lands that were approved got constructed the way the developer said he was going to do them on his platt. And so we have, we have a lot of areas. And I think someone commented at one of the last meetings about how many lots or miles of streets that we have, and it's pretty substantial. One thought would be is to identify those and mark them out specifically and, and create as a part of this thing that Mr. Flynn is working on. Clearly identify where those are, those lots and streets are that are platted, unimproved and would cost us some money to make them accessible by the properties along there. So that we have, we have a record of it and that's where this thing would apply. Because it doesn't apply to our paved streets now. It doesn't apply to new subdivisions coming in. This really applies to existing platted lots on platted street right of ways that are not improved to our paving standards that we consider acceptable in Bella Vista.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Flynn. I think we've kicked this one around. If you'd take it back to the committee and, and to Superintendent Button, I'd be grateful.
Okay.
Okay, the last of the discussion items is septic ordinance discussion. And in your packet, there is a draft of an ordinance. And Mr. Kelly, I believe that you put this together with Mr. Snow or was it Mr. Snow or Mr. Williams?
Well, it was Mr. Snow, it was Mr. Williams and, and, and really that draft that's in the packet is my effort to sort of put a legal touch on Larry's draft that was presented last month, that very first section, the A section dealing with new residential permits and also dealing with the definition of bedrooms. And then also dealing with the penalty for violation. The, the discussion last month, based on that, didn't try to include anything regarding regulations regarding the listings of property or what might have to be disclosed in terms of existing structures. This is going to deal with new structures. And so this is a rough, somewhere between a rough draft and a final draft. I do have a, a couple of unanswered questions on some of the technical jargon in there and there are some, there's some initials in there and acronyms or something. I need to spell out what that means and and I have at least one other suggestion on some of the information about the definition of bedrooms. But let me tell you what I tried to do with what Larry drafted. And then you can take with it, take it and run. Basically, what we've said in this is that doesn't matter what you call it on, on your drawing. If it, if it meets, if it's a room and it meets the certain, certain things, then it's going to be considered a bedroom. And if it's a bedroom and it's a certain number of bedrooms, then it's going to have to meet a certain minimum septic capacity in order to be granted a permit. And so what you see in this bedroom definition, that's why that is so laid out so clearly. So we, and, and I've done quite a bit of rewording and some things I left out because it didn't particularly relate to the septic issue. I know Larry has seen this draft and, and since, since it was written and is familiar with what I'm saying. But we, we sort of, we say for purposes of this ordinance, what constitutes a bedroom? And then it, it will get around these people artfully trying to name rooms, a certain thing. Call this one a study, call this one a day room, call this one a sitting room, call that one an office, and then there's one bedroom. And, and really it's more like a four bedroom, but it's listed as a one. So what we're going to say is, well, it meets these various things we have listed and it mean all of them. Then it will be considered a bedroom for purposes of this septic work. So that's, that's why this bedroom language is, it factors in and it's so critical to the problem we're trying to address. So we, we do that. And then we also in this, it's important you note that we exclude new residences that are, that are going to be connected to sanitary sewer. So this has not been a problem for any of the sewer homes because they don't have this incentive to really, in my opinion, misrepresent on their application what a bedroom is. And then on the back end have a list, perhaps have a listing that, that says something different in terms of the number of bedrooms. So the, there's an exemption for that. Also included in this draft is a requirement that in the new construction, there'd be a label or a sticker, I should say, on the outside of the electrical box which tells that how many bedrooms it's been approved for and the date of approval. And so that would stay, that would be on the exterior of the electric box. That would have to be there at the time of after construction as a condition of a certificate of occupancy. And of course, the, the, the provisions for penalties. Now, let me add this. We, we do have provisions for penalties and they step up. First offense is not less than 500, second offense is 1,000, third and subsequent offense is not less than 2,500. But keep in mind, your main enforcement is going to be denial of permit. You're not going to really have, I, I just don't see a circumstance where someone would could violate this without in turn violating another ordinance by building a structure without a permit, which is something we regulate in another part of the code. So I think really your enforcement's going to be through denial of a permit. But in any event, the, the specific violations do carry potential penalty as listed. So that is in there as well. And let me go back and, and mention something that I mentioned to you at our last work session discussion and that dealt with the health department. I have not had this discussion yet, but I really believe that the health department would, should be and perhaps would be much more helpful in enforcement on this when they are aware of this is going on. Their definition of a bedroom is, is that first line that I put in the ordinance that you'll see there, and that's basically any room that's, any room inside a residence intended for the purpose of sleeping quarters. That's the extent of their definition. So I think they have some leeway to, to look at a situation and perhaps deny an installation based on that. And I can certainly let Doug Tap address that, those, you know, those issues in that communication. But you know, it's possible that we could make more use of that as well. I'm not saying that this could not be done. But could make more use of this as well. So let me also tell you, I had a conversation with an attorney for the Northwest Arkansas Board of Realtors. It was a good conversation. They are generally in favor of us doing something to address this issue. They're aware of it. They are concerned. I don't think I'm overstating. They are concerned if we want to get into the disclosure requirements as it relates to real estate transactions and closing requirements. I think they're, they're not going to necessarily agree with that. Obviously, I think it would depend, but they're glad to see if we're going to do that. They're glad to see that might be something else we do later. Because they're not necessarily positive that they would be in support of that kind of action. But they do see the problem. They are supportive of this generally us doing that. The conversation I had with their attorney, their board had a question about the authority of the city to regulate in this area in terms of defining bedroom for purposes of septic. We, like I said, we had a good conversation, the attorney and I. I, I familiarized him with the new statute that just passed the legislature this year, which provides additional clarity in terms of the city's authority to regulate sewage disposal systems at the local level. And that's an act that came into effect in 2021. It's Act, I think it's 906, but don't hold me to that number. I've got it here, but I can't find it right here handy. Of course, because I'm trying to tell you what it says. Oh, here it is. Act 906 of 2021. So they were satisfied that, in fact, we do have that authority and that was one question they had. So I think at least from the Northwest Arkansas Board of Realtors, they are generally agreeable, but that's the only conversation I've had. Don't know about any other interested parties. So I don't know, it may be more than you wanted to know, but that's what I can tell you about it. And I'm sure Larry would like to fill in on what he's thinking.
Okay, before we continue, Mr. Snow, are you okay?
I, I'm worried about that too.
Jerry, are you okay?
Yeah.
Okay. We were just a little concerned.
I, I got a sleeping problem.
Okay. All right. Who wants to continue with this discussion?
Well, the only thought I had on this is I thought when you're transferring property, the proper disclosure of this situation was pretty darn crucial. And I have never thought just put in a sticker on the you know, the electrical panel was good enough. Disclosure when you sell the property.
Well, the, one thing I did talk to the attorney about was in the circuit, because they're aware of these homes that have these underbuilt septic systems is what I'll call them. And they know they have a duty to properly disclose this to buyers. And what he told, what he indicated to me is that they do have sellers that they're representing who don't want to disclose that and they have to disclose that. So that's why they see the problem and think it should be fixed. So they, they are, they are familiar with, with the ethical obligation and, and really I guess their legal obligation to appropriately not misrepresent properties when they list them. So they're aware of that. And, and what, you know, we, I want to draw a distinction. What we're doing in this potential particular draft is dealing with new construction. We, we have not tried to address existing homes that may be resold that may have undersized septic. That's really not anything we have tried to address in this draft. That would be That would be. So, you know, something else. One of the reasons why I think it's important to separate it is because that's more of a regulation of the real estate business. Than it is a regulation regarding septic. Uh, sewage, uh, the septic treatment system. So, or septic, uh, sewage disposal system. So. It's really a whole different type of regulation. I know it's related to the same problem, but it's entirely different type of regulation. So I think it more appropriately would be addressed separately. You could address it in a separate ordinance at the same, same time. That's up to you, but, um. The, uh, this, this particular draft of what we see here is not. Written in any way to do anything about existing homes. That will be resold.
Okay, yeah, I see you, what you mean.
Okay. Anybody else want to kick in with some words? Alrighty. So you have a decision? Yes, Mr. Wels.
I, I guess in, in reading through this, there's a couple of, uh, uh. Wordsmithing things and, and the attorney, Kelly has mentioned some of them. But there's a little wordsmithing that needs to be done to clarify some of these points and I'll work with him this week to get a. An updated draft out for, for Thursday.
Okay, so. You have a decision to make. Do you want to try and get it on the council agenda for next Monday? Or is that too quickly?
And, and I guess, I, I guess the answer to that mayor would be. Unless, uh, one of our, uh, our, our members. Or more of our members feel that it's too. Premature to take it forward. I think it's in a final, a final enough form. Uh, that Mr. Kelly has placed it in to make it useful for. Um, building inspection and DCS to use. I think it's critical there. Uh, the one aspect dealing with buildings for sale is a whole separate issue and. And quite frankly, we're trying to focus on new building permits for new construction with this, with this ordinance. And so I, I think it's, I think it's close enough. And ready to present for the first reading next Monday. And I would ask, uh, the consensus of the council to do that.
I agree with that. I, I think we need to get going. I mean, the, the process is already slow enough with all the readings and whatnot.
Right.
Uh, Larry, may I ask you, uh. Would you want to propose an emergency clause on this one so that whenever you get done considering it, if it's approved? It would be immediately effective because I just. You're going to be talking about another sixty days after you come to final approval. And with this issue being what it is, I just, I didn't put it in there, but I wanted to see about what you want to do before I did that, so.
My, my thought would be, uh, Attorney Kelly, that we would, uh. Take it through two readings, allow plenty of time for feedback of the public and, and outside, uh, third parties. And then, uh, move to, uh. Waive the third reading and, and at the second session that we have this before the council. We would move it to adoption with, uh. Emergency clause.
Okay, so I, I'll need to go ahead and in the draft, go ahead and put the emergency clause, just so, uh. We've got it ready to go because I, I want to avoid what we had to do last time was under emergency clause. So. Uh, I want to go ahead and get it in there, put it in the title and get it in there so that it's there. Then you can make us, you know, obviously it's a separate vote whether you want to make it an emergency clause or not, but, uh. Okay, up, and Larry, I'll work with you on getting that final draft done.
Hey, Mr. Fowler?
Um. Yeah, so I guess it's a couple of things. So. Obviously, this wouldn't impact, uh, any building plans that have already been approved. Now, what about, what about building pa- plans that had been submitted but had not been reviewed yet? If you implement the emergency clause, of course, these people wouldn't, you know.
My, my decision, my, my opinion to you on that would be. It would apply to any application that was submitted. After the ordinance became effective. So. If you, you adopt it with an emergency clause on a Tuesday. And so it's effective Wednesday morning. There will be any application received from Wednesday morning moving forward, but it would not apply to applications prior to that.
And, uh, one, one other thing is. And I understand, I mean, if you're not going to be issued a permit for occupancy. Um, I don't know that. Uh, the, the, the penalties in section four are, I don't know how relevant they are. I, I, and I would just say, I don't, even if they were relevant, I don't know that they're really stiff enough in my mind. Uh.
Well, it's not an occupancy permit. It's the, it's the building, it's the permit to start construction.
Oh, to start construction.
Building permit, not the occupancy permit. So. Uh, it would deny them the building permit. So they couldn't. Until they got that, they couldn't. Uh, I gue- I guess Doug, I guess they could have done their. Their land prep, but they couldn't, they couldn't start pouring foundation, do any other work from that. Is that right?
That's correct, Jackson, but one question I had was, we can deny the building permit, but. For those that do get a building permit and then they change it during the billing process and that is caught later. Those fines could apply then as well, correct? I mean.
Well, I mean, if they, if they submitted an app, the, the ordinance is in effect, they submit a, a conforming application. Okay, we say it's four bedrooms, we give them that per, and then they go in and they put in a two bedroom system and it's. Absolutely, that would be, I think it would be a violation at that point of the ordinance. And I think you probably could also deny them a certificate of occupancy as well. So, uh, but yes, there are things we could do at that point.
And sometimes we even find this out after the certificate of occupancy. So. They may be someone living in the house and then the health department notifies us that. There's a three bedroom house occupied with a two bedroom septic.
Yeah.
That point, it's already changed hands from the builder to the owner.
Um, yeah, well, we'd need to look carefully at that circumstance. I, I'm going to, you know. I want to encourage the health department to take all enforcement action they have legally the right to do now. I mean, they can, uh, this Arkansas, uh, Sewage Control Act, which is this nineteen seventy-seven state law that. All of their authority derives from. Uh, gives them the authority to make, make referral to the county prosecuting attorney for violations. I think if. There were false statements made in applications pursuant to that act, which is what these are. Or which their copies they're presenting to you, which they've submitted to the county, uh, health department, which is the state office. Then, uh, that's, that's a much, that's a misdemeanor criminal offense. And I'm the misdemeanor prosecutor in Bella Vista, so I'm more than happy to take a referral on that. Uh, if they're willing to, to, to look into it and, and provide me with, with a case. To, uh, pursue that criminally, in fact, if it came to that point. But obviously, we, we want to make sure homes are built. To suit people and aren't left half constructed and. And are, are, are fitting it within our code and we want to get them done. So. It's not all about prosecuting people. It's about getting compliant structures done. And so our, our real hammer on that is through the withholding of permits.
Okay, Mr. Fowler?
No, I just, no, that'll let it go. Um, so. And, and Doug, you just kind of stepped us through a couple of, you know, occasioned situations where it would be possible for a builder to. You know, just be bold enough if he's just going to be fined five hundred dollars to go ahead and move forward and do what he's going to do. So, I mean, if, if, if we're going to leave this or if they're going to be a workaround, I want this to hurt. So I don't know what the right numbers are. I have conversations this week. Uh, I'm ready to move forward with the first reading, et cetera, because I think it's. It's past time to get going. But, uh, anyway, I, I, I want, I want, I want the penalty to be stiff.
I agree, certainly a five hundred dollar penalty. On a house that could have praised for twenty thousand dollars more because it's listed as a three bedroom instead of a two bedroom is. Not much penalty.
But, but remember, we would have probably. Denied them a certificate of occupancy. So there's no, they couldn't, no one could live it yet. We, we, we would enforce that. So we would have that. Now, one thing we could do is if, if there was a non-compliant permit. I mean, we can do things like make it a, a penalty every day. The condition continues to exist. And we could go up to. Oh, I think it's, gosh, don't hold me. I think it's maybe up to a thousand dollars per day, every day. Or something. I mean, we can, we can go on, try to go down that road and. And, and we could catch some attention by putting a penalty like that in there that might, uh. You know, uh, keep people from, from trying to skirt the system.
Could we blackball the builder?
Oh, that's a, that's a whole different thing, Jim.
Okay.
Anyone's going to have a right to submit an application.
Who's asking?
Yeah, I.
I can live with no.
You know, it's good, you know, honestly, in a practical sense though, Jim. You know, after due process for a person. I mean, we could create a non-compliant list or something now. Uh, the, you know, or something where somebody could go and look and see how many, what builders have been. Denied permits because of violations or something like that. Uh, but I think probably the health department could give that information just based on. Somebody asking and being diligent. Um, I know we can give that information if somebody just asks us, um. But, uh, they, we can't necessarily. Blackball them.
Hi. Mr. Burke?
Wanted to kind of inquire about a couple of things here. My sensibility about this, uh, as we've discussed it is. That, uh, there needs to be something to protect buyers. So I'm, I'm kind of thinking on the back end of it and most of this work, I think you guys are talking about are on the front end. How do you control the, uh, the builders on the front end? And that's fine. And I, I think we still grapple with that abstraction of. The number of bedrooms, which has, you know, nothing to do with septic capacity. What has to do with septic capacity is how many people live in the house. And I, I wish we could lose the abstraction on the number of bedrooms. And, and just have a sewer, a, a septic system that is rated for four people or six people. And then once that's understood, uh, it's up to the buyer to determine, uh, if they want to buy that house. How many people are going to be living there, whether it's going to be sufficient capacity for, uh, for their intent. But I do want to, I do want to make sure that we're doing everything we can, uh, to educate the buyer on the back end. And so I know putting the sticker on the box is a good idea. But is there also something that can be done at the closing table? So before you sign off, and, and I know that's late in the game, but I think that is. The, the last point of, uh, protection for a buyer is at the closing table. Do, is there, could we have a requirement, if there's not already? That if you're buying a house that's on a septic system, that you're going to be given an instruction manual of sorts. What are the pros and cons of the septic system? How do you maintain a septic system? Anybody who's buying in Bella Vista, it's very strong probab- probability they're buying a house with a septic system. For the first time. That was true for me when I came here. And, uh, I think if we could do something at the closing table, that if you're. Uh, selling a property in the city limits of Bella Vista, you're required to provide the, uh. The buyer with, uh, instructions and, and information. So that they can be educated about what they're getting into. And that would include, what is the capacity of the septic system? What is the downsides? What's the downside of having a septic system that may not be, uh. The capacity that you intend to use the house for. What would that mean? It could mean early failure. It could be, mean higher maintenance costs. It could be something within the house, uh, backup of the, of the septic system. I think those are all things that people, uh, uh, need to be educated about before they buy a house with a septic system.
Mr. Tap, I believe, uh, you spoke to someone from the health department. Uh, today on another issue, but a similar one on septic. Will, will you check with them, please, to see if they have an educational document? That can be.
Yes, sir. Sure, I sure will. I spoke with them today and they said they would be happy to help us with. Some, uh, education quarterly or semiannually, uh, Mr. Snow reached out and asked me if that was a possibility. They said they would help us, but I can circle back with them and see if they've got something for real estate transactions.
Okay, yeah, not yet, not after the fact. You've bought the house, now you want to get educated. That might be good too. But how do we make sure before they complete the transaction? That they understand what they're buying into and what the ramifications are. For the septic system, the specific septic system that they're purchasing.
I'd be willing to bet they've got something already like that, Doug.
Yes.
Okay, Steve, was there something else as well? You said there were two things?
Yes, I, I was just wanting to know from, uh, Attorney Kelly whether we can as a city, can we require. Certain things be a part of the closing process?
I, I, I think that you have broad regulatory authority. I think that there's probably a way to do that. However, I, like I, like I said previously, I think that's more probably a separate ordinance. Like, you, you know, you might want to do that now. But I think it's probably because that's more of a regulation of the real estate transaction business.
Right.
And real estate brokers than it is. Septic installations. So it's kind of a, it's almost, it's, it's getting to the same problem and trying to achieve the same goal through a different. Purpose.
Yes.
Through a different action. So.
Okay, that's great.
Yes, I, I think there's probably a way to do some of that.
Okay.
Right, so we've got two loose ends. Steve, you want to take point? On that, on that, uh, latest issue about. Getting something in place that's on the real estate side as opposed to the other for the educational purposes?
Yes, sir.
John?
Based on my conversation, I just, fair warning or perhaps not, just not a warning, but just in terms of communication. Uh, that Board of Realtors, I think are going to be very interested in, in that particular aspect. And, uh, of, of what we may be looking at. And, uh. So I, I think that to the extent there could be resistance on that, that's where it would come from. Now, they've not told me they would resist any of that. I just wouldn't be surprised, so.
I, I suspect reputable realtors would have no problem with their buyers being presented information. That helps them understand the transaction they're about to make.
Okay, so Steve, the current president of, of the Northwest Realty Board is Mike Warner. And he's the broker at Colwell Banker up on. On, uh, Walton, just past the new roundabout. Okay, if you can picture it on the right as you're going.
Yes, sir.
Into Batonville, okay? And the other loose end, uh, John, do you want to take point? On. How do we handle the sale and the purchase? Not the new construction anymore, but how do we protect the buyer?
Okay, that, that sounds a little similar to what Steve was just talking about.
Well, Steve's talking about the closing. For new. Particularly new people who come here who have never had a septic before.
Okay.
So that would still be there, but I think what you're talking about is. How do we make sure that. Somehow the house hasn't slipped through the crack. And it's really a two bedroom septic, but it's a four bedroom. And what kind of disclosure? I think that's what you were going at before. It's the, it's the resale now that. We still have an issue with, is that correct?
Yeah, I was thinking of disclosure at a real estate transaction, yeah.
Well, then maybe you want to team up with, with, uh, Steve. It could be one in the same. Mr. Fowler?
No, I was just gonna say, uh, and it's, it's completely or totally up to John. You know, I think he, he has a lot, you know, on his plate with the, uh. Uh, the streets conversation, but I'd be willing to step up, step in and, and, uh, work on the disclosure part. I mean, John, it's up to you, but.
Okay, I'll let the two, I'll let the two of you work it out. Good off.
Well, well, hang on. So we, we need to, if they're going to be working together, keep in mind those are going to have to be public meetings and, uh. And, and all of that. So if you've got two council members working together, uh. You know, we'll need to keep that in mind.
Uh, so just, you know, after, after Doug and John have figured out who's going to do it, if it seems. Uh, practical to work with Mr. Burke and please run everything through, uh, Mr. Jerkson. So that we can get it publicized. And Mr. Wels, I think you have something to say?
Uh, I, I guess I do, and, and, and both of it has to do with property transfers. One is the transfer of a new building. Which sometimes happens, uh, long after the. Occupancy permit has been issued. Uh, many times the, the, the new buyer isn't aware. And doesn't get a copy of the, uh, approved for operation permit from, uh, ADH. As, as we, as we're told, uh, whether that's true or not is another story. But to educate those people on, uh, the buyers on the use of a septic system. Uh, deals with Mr. Burke's, uh, point. But the other side of it is the real estate market of, of. Sales of existing property where you have an existing owner in there. It, it's an established property, maybe one year, maybe five years old, maybe twenty-five years old. That's on septic and, and that has, uh, a whole. Whole new area relative to, uh, the issues and concerns for the new owners. One is. It may be, uh, an existing three bedroom or four bedroom home on a two bedroom septic, but that's how it's been. The question is, should it be allowed to be listed and sold that way? Uh, knowingly. And the second part of that is. What is the condition of the system that exists there? And I think. Those are critical areas for. Uh, for the sale of properties that are existing, not new properties under construction. But the sale of existing properties has a whole layer. Of aspects with it and challenges, uh, associated with it. Part of that is that. Should we require that the septic tank be pumped within six months of the actual closing? To make sure, uh, that it's cleaned out and, and ready to go. Many septics in, in Bella Vista may not have been pumped for 10 or 20 or even 30 years. Quite frankly, when you buy a home here, there's no instruction and no advice to, you need to pump it every two years, every five years, every 10 years. Some states implement that standard. Some states even implement the standard that it has to be reported that you have it pumped within a certain time schedule. So something to consider in that transfer of ownership aspect.
All good thoughts, thank you. Okay, I think we've had some good conversations on this. I want to thank everybody for participating. Before we adjourn for the evening, just to let you, well, first of all, to remind you of our meeting tomorrow with Congressman Womack, excuse me, over at the Country Club. He's basically looking for information, what's happening around the city. I have put together some storyboards and displays that I'll put on easels and address them so we can bring them up to snuff. We'll also talk about the work that's going on in 340 right now in the bridges and also on, on Mercy Way. I expect probably no more than an hour and 15, an hour and 20. And then his handlers will probably want him to get him out there to the next meeting. So that's at 11 o'clock tomorrow up at the Country Club. Yes, Larry?
What about including in that some of the challenges that we're faced with in Bella Vista about the unimproved streets and building going on? See if there's any federal money available for us.
I wouldn't hold your breath on that one. But you can ask to see if he knows anything on the infrastructure. I am going to Little Rock immediately after that luncheon. And I'll be down there till Friday in meetings galore, as it turns out, because of this new position that I've taken. But certainly, I'm going to be also having a, a conversation with their legal team about the broadband problem we have here and how can we address it with our money? And Larry, I'll certainly ask the question, is there going to be anything for roads at a local level? The National League of Cities hasn't committed to anything, and I haven't seen anything so far that would lead me to believe that they're going to take it to the local level, but certainly it is needed. Okay, anybody have a parting thought before we stop?
Hey, it is a good catch on John's part. We have two Advertising Promotion Commission members whose term will expire at the end of July, July the 31st. Both have agreed to, you know, be served up again to continue their participation. That's Tom Judson and Jane Low, both very valuable and value-added members to the commission. So I'm going to ask Jace if we could write that and get that on the agenda for next Monday. I would appreciate it because we, we need to get that done. Sorry about that.
I've got a note to do that. Notified me. Let me ask you this on the.
I do have a question about that. Excuse me for interrupting, Jason. When I brought that up, Doug, I thought that A and P was meeting on the 19th. And I've discovered that the A and P's meeting on the 26th, which is after.
Right.
So I don't think the council can ratify our action if we haven't taken it yet.
That's what I was going to ask. I was going to say. Right.
See what I mean? We're going to take action in A and P on the 20th. I'd have to do that in September. When I brought it up to Wayne, I was thinking we were meeting tomorrow. And then I discovered, or Thursday, now I discovered, no, it's a week from Thursday.
So what you're saying is that the A and P Commission has not approved these reappointments?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I guess we have, we did talk about it, Doug, in a meeting.
Yeah, we talked about it, I'm sure we would approve it, but, you know, I don't know if we could do that without a meeting or.
You know what, let me, okay, so I apologize, I didn't realize. So I'm going to see if we could maybe call a special meeting in order, you know, to get this done. You know, this week.
That's possible.
Okay.
Well, I can, I can go ahead and draft the resolution that would ratify the A and P's commission's selection. And, and we can have that ready to go. And if the A and P acts before next Monday, then we can get it in the agenda, I guess. If not, we'll wait till September.
Okay, so that's Tom Judson and Jane Low. And what would be their new expiry dates, Doug?
Four years.
Four years back, is that dated to July? Or is it four years from the time council passes it, Mr. Kelly?
I'm sure it would be four years from the expiration of their previous term. So.
Okay. Larry, did you have something else to add before we leave?
Just a request, if we could get perhaps a memo from your street director telling us what streets have been completed for, for paving over the last month or since the last report? And, and those that have been seal-coded to kind of track the process without having to go out and try and drive all of them to see what's done and what's not done? Just to give us a, a feel of where we are in terms of completion in the project.
Okay, the sorry contractor has not been in yet, so nothing's been seal-coded.
Yeah, well, then there would be nothing there, but just to let us kind of keep the council appraised of what the progress is on the, on the street program.
Okay, I'll have to get Karen to do that for you. Unfortunately, Mr., or Superintendent Button is rather ill, so I'll get, I'll get to Karen tomorrow.
Is it serious?
On that subject, I wanted to mention one thing. You know, we ended up paving Spanker because it was damaged quite badly. Spanker between, I guess it's between County Road 40 and Houston. Some people may have noticed, it was damaged quite badly by the cold. And that resulted in Superintendent Button having to drop some streets that he thought he was going to do. He said as a kind of an example, things happen that are, you know, change your plans a little bit.
Although the, although that paving was split 50/50 with county and it's from Jim, just a little bit past.
It's from Spanker Ridge. It's that first street across the bridge, it's from Spanker Ridge.
That's right, yeah, not quite County Road 40.
Right, it's Spanker Ridge up to Jim's Old Fashioned, or just a little, a little shy of it.
Yeah.
It looks very nice.
Okay. If that's it, I'll adjourn and we'll see you at 11 o'clock tomorrow over at the Country Club. Thank you, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.